That you will stand, state your name clearly, and spell your last name. That so the record will be accurate. Our first issue tonight is with Mr. Leonard Loza. Leonard, do you want to come up to the table? Would you please state your name and spell your last name?
Good evening. My name is Leonard, L-E-O-N-A-R-D-L-O.
I'm sorry, I'm only here for the next day on your agenda.
All right, L-O-Z-A, that's all right.
Well, he at least knows how to spell his first name. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 212B4A of the Village Code. Seeking relief from density requirement for subdivision of lot at 23 North Mannheim, from one lot to two single lots. Do you want to describe what you are planning to do?
Yes, I believe every member of the board should have a plan in front of them. There is a lot on the corner of John Street and North Mannheim. This lot was formerly owned by Rodney Douglas. I have purchased the lot and made numerous improvements to the property. This property, where the subdivision line is that you see, the house that would be placed on there has a southern roof exposure so I could gain solar. The access to the house would be John Street so that all of the neighbors on North Mannheim after that property would not have to change their address on their driver's license, their checkbooks, and everything else. I have also on there supplied the water and sewer lines so we don't have any more of the problems that recently occurred with a recent subdivision. I have sent 25, 26 letters of notice to the members of the community that were listed by the Village Board, 28 members. And I hope to put a house at some future day or someone else will put a house on that particular lot at another day in time.
Okay.
I don't understand.
Okay.
Did you say that the access was not on you?
This is the house. This is proposed. Unfortunately, after you got these, it should have been over here. That would be, that would access it this way. This will, this will not be, this just is from a proposed.
So we don't really have your proposal on paper, what it looks like?
This is proposed, it's not, not presented. But as for the reason that I explained to you, I have no problem with the stipulation if you would like. The final Mylar copies that need to go to the county to be registered, you could give the approval with that the access would be to John Street. I have no problem with that.
For the benefit of the board members, maybe just if I may provide a little background. This is initially--
Would you state your name and spell it?
Certainly, that would be Kirk LaValle, Director of Planning for the Village. And although this precedes my hiring by the Village, I do understand the background was that first it went to the planning board. And please, Mr. Loza, feel free to correct me if you, as I wasn't present for those proceedings. But it went before the planning board and I think it was proposed to place an addition that would create a two-family dwelling.
Correct.
And I think there was some discussion. And they ended up recommending that it be two single-family dwellings with a variance of one lot with compliant amount of area and the other lot with something short of that. The, as I understand, as it exists right now, it's one lot. So it was a, this would allow for a subdivision that cannot take place without the zoning board's action. But I think it's important to point out the outline, the thick outline is the parcel.
Correct.
This line here, slightly diagonal, is a proposed lot line. So that's not eminently clear.
You were just a few sentences ahead of me. I was going to tell them about the planning board, but that's perfectly okay.
Sure. Well, the reason I also, I wanted to make sure that I stated, my understanding is that, you mentioned that if someone didn't build here, but there is no, there is no second lot at this moment. If this proceeding is approved--
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Okay. If this proceeding is approved, then there would be. And also, there may be, your surveyor had placed a note, 21.9 feet as pre-existing non-conforming, but because this is still one lot, currently it's actually 68 feet is the side yard. Under the proposal, it would be 21.9. That's actually a secondary variance that would be necessary.
Or a smaller house.
Or a smaller house.
Mr. LaValle, is our planning officer here?
Chairman, if I may, we received, there was correspondence received in the clerk's office today regarding the Loza project. So that Mr. Loza-- Mr. Loza is on the Chinese, I'm going to pick him up.
Okay.
I will read this into the record. It is a letter from Alexander and Rachel Camelos. Dear Members of the Zoning Board, Several days ago, Rachel and I received a letter from Mr. Leonard Loza notifying us that he is requesting a variance from Section 212B4A of the Village Code. Unfortunately, we will be out of town on the week of the public hearing. However, we wanted to make it known that we are not in favor of having the lot at 23 North Mannheim subdivided into two single-family lots. One of the things that we enjoy about this part of the village is that it has a bit more of an open feel to it. And we believe that building an additional house on this corner would detract from that feeling of openness. Please feel free to contact us if you would like to provide you with more information. Also, please let us know if we need to take any steps other than submitting this letter to have our point of view officially documented. It is now officially documented.
You may keep the chairman's blessing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, and also add that this is, this is the type of variance that is a little bit hazardous in terms of the precedent that it might set. In other words, you have one lot and once, if this is approved, then it sets sort of precedent that makes it more difficult to deny things that, where there's one lot and a subdivision is sought. In my own opinion, because I wasn't here for the planning board proceeding, because I wasn't able to participate in that, because Mr. Loza agreed and/or took the advice of the planning board to come here, I don't really feel that I wish to interfere that much. There's also a second factor, and that is, as I look around the village at the properties that Mr. Loza owns, I happen to find his care for the property and the construction that he undertakes to be superior. I think that's a factor. And with that, I'll probably leave my recommendations at that. But I think, especially since I wasn't here for the commencement of this process.
Thank you, Mr. Loza. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this point? Let us have a motion to officially open--
So move. Second, show them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
My name is Tom Dubois. My home is at 26 Mill Rock. It lets the back of my property, but it's 23. A long time ago, when I was a student, a teacher told me, if you want to understand the place, you want to have a good feel for the place and what the people value, park your car and walk around the neighborhoods. It gives you a much better understanding of what's going on and you'll benefit by it. So the other day, I walked from Main Street north on Mannheim. Corner of John and Mannheim, we have a very lovely restored piece of property. Leonard, I commend Leonard, he's done a wonderful job. It's outstanding from the standpoint of approach. It makes the neighborhood improve. It adds the integrity of a single-family, a single-family lot. And I would like to see it remain, a single-family house on a single-family lot. I think it, that's really the intention of the original builders. That house probably has historical significance. The architecture of the house itself is very attractive. And Leonard has brought that out. And so I really would not like to see this break up into a smaller piece of property, you know, with some kind of a pocket house on it. I think that would detract from the total value.
Thank you. Did he spell his last name?
No.
You, I didn't think she did.
But I would.
Oh.
We have two secret agents here.
Same as Henry Duff.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this matter?
I'm his wife.
Would you spell your last name?
D-U-C-O-I-S, Marion Dubois. And it is beautiful, because we live next door to a house that Mr. Loza has fixed up very lovingly. It's beautiful. And when you bought that other piece of property, it's just, it's just very nice. We have a wonderful little neighborhood the way it is. We also, on John Street between Mannheim and Mill Rock, we have three multiple-family homes. One has four garbans, the other is a duplex, and the one that Leonard has is a two-family home. And so I'd say, if anything, I would like to see it stay the same, of course. But if anything, I would rather see Mr. Loza add on to the house he has, hoping that he keeps the integrity of the roof line because it's very unique and lovely. But to subdivide and have another small little home put in there, I just don't think, it would take away from the character of the whole area. And I know if he does add on, he can add on with integrity and architecturally sound.
Thank you.
My name is Marlon Schwartz of 22 Mill Rock Road. Which, I bought this house about 18 years ago. And I bought it because it was quiet, pleasant neighborhood. And I had the plan of living there for the foreseeable future quietly and comfortably. And before, after a few years, Mr. Loza bought the property across John Street from me, which is John Street, it changed everything, talk about density. It went from having one person to live there, which admittedly was few. The first two or three years I lived there, it was a nightmare. There were eight cars parked there every night, coming and going at 4:00 in the morning. And I think there's enough density in the area. I think, I'll just mention something else. When I bought my property, there was a variance in place to increase my garage to two-car garage. And I'm pained to continue that because I was a new owner. And a question I was asked by this board is, you're not going to put a dental office in there, are you? You know, that this would have increased the traffic by maybe two cars a day. You know, at any given time, there might have been two or three more cars on the block. No additional noise, only during business hours. And I have no intention to do that. But had I said, yes, that's what I want to do, I'm sure the answer would have been no. That's going to change the character of this neighborhood. There is zoning laws to prevent this. So things have already changed a lot and I don't really want to-- It's gotten better now. I recommend Mr. Loza that now he sits at best and is next to me and I'm no longer being woken up at 4:00 in the morning. But for three years, I was woken up at 4:00 in the morning every three nights, three nights or so a week. The police were there about twice a semester. And it was really a little nightmare. But he has made it better in response to my complaints. But just the idea of having more people in this little neighborhood, I think there's zoning laws to prevent that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Rich Stephens, pretty easy fellow. For the reason Marion brought us exactly why I'm in favor of doing this, that really is a single-family neighborhood. Nobody questions Leonard, he does nice work. And nobody, but that's not the question. The question is, who's going to own it after? Who might own it tomorrow? What's going to happen to that property? By creating the second single-family situation there, you will prevent it from becoming a two-family. Look at the corner of John Street and Grove, next door to Mr. Cockmos, or two doors up from Mr. Cockmos' house. You'll see a perfect example of what I wouldn't want to see on that lot. But could be allowed, would be allowed. Two single-family houses is what that neighborhood is about. Putting on, we do not have design in our planning board review. So we can't tell the next guy to do a nice job like Leonard's done. I think the best thing to do with that lot is to make it a single-family lot. Make it so you can't make two families out of it. The size will be restricted by the fact that the lot's no bigger than a three-bedroom lot. So it's not going to become five bedrooms. I think you're going to find it to be much nicer than if he was granted a two-family variance. That's why I supported it partly with the board.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Zeeler. Like Rich, I'm also under the planning board, I'm a citizen. Just like the Edgar, the things that Mr. Stephens said, I think that that neighborhood is predominantly a single-family house neighborhood and I'd love to see it kept that way. This isn't a choice of an empty lot or a single-family house. It's a choice between a substantial addition to a small house or a second lot, a single-family home, a relatively small one, maybe the size of the lot. And I think the lighter choice is not that you maintain the quality of your neighborhood much better than a tradition. And as Mr. Stephens points out, this is for all time. You don't have control over it. The next owner could be here. Probably you have troublesome situations if you have a large house with five, six bedrooms as opposed to a single-family three-bedroom house. It's not going to be significant. So I would urge to consider moving these areas.
Thank you.
I want to say something. I want to say something about what Rich is talking about.
All right.
I live next door, well, my rental house is next door to the house that Mr. Stephens was speaking of. And what's really a shame, and in a way I kind of blame myself that I didn't buy the house on the corner so everything could have remained the same. Two times I had the chance and I didn't do it. And I really regret it. Because that, and he had all the right to do it, because he had the right to put that building on there, it'll always be that. Unless I win the lottery and buy the property and tear the addition down. Which I probably won't. But anyway, it really is, I think it's, I think it's good of Mr. Loza to, you know, he has a property and I think that he is doing the right thing here. And I support what the other people have said because of what I've just said about what's happened in my neighborhood.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
I have a copy of a tax math, which is really not a valid survey, but it's usually within close reason. The first lot, which is the lot that I'm in discussion of, listed as 23, has a footage across the front of 107.2. The next lot, moving north, is a 50-foot wide lot by 128 feet. It is a two-family house. It's an old, Mr. LaFever used to live there. And the next lot is 60, the next lot is 50, the next lot is 100, the next lot is 50, the next lot is 50. So the frontage of the basically proposed lots would remain within reason the same. As which is in keeping with the neighborhood with regard to the parcel sizes and the structures that we built upon them. This second house, as pointed out by the planner, unfortunately I can't remember his name. I would either go for a variance to make a bigger house, which really doesn't make much sense. It's my intent, as you see by the proposed size, it says 23 by 40. If it is, if it is, there's a perfect house that would fit right there, located to the south of John and Joan Tannudo's house. It's a two-bedroom cape, it looks perfect right there. That's the type of house that would be put there. The dreaded fear is that we're going to put more students in the neighborhood. Okay? On the note of that, as I see someone shaking their head, I would like to point out that college students bring between $137 and $140 million to our community that is spent throughout this area. We have nine pizzerias in this town that have survived and approximately seven Oriental restaurants. They are the life of this community. Believe it or not, this town would fold up quite appreciably, I do believe, if all of the students were to leave here. So it is not my intent to put students in a small house because it doesn't pay to build it that way. It is my intent to sell it to a new starting family that has one or perhaps two children. You can't, it doesn't pay to build a small house and put college students in it because your rate of return would be just short of forever. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes?
My name is Claudia Goldstein. I'm Tom Marion's Dubois neighbor, in Mill Rock. I'm due to this neighborhood, we just bought our house just about two years ago. And I'm just putting in my two cents to say that how lovely the lot is now. I've watched the improvements that Mr. Loza has enacted over the last year and it's really quite lovely. But I also feel that I would like it to stay the same. I'm also wondering a little bit about parking. I, John Street has no parking on it, so I, and I'm, you know, as I say, I'm a novice to the neighborhood, but I just wonder what adding, you know, to the density is going to do to the parking situation, which is already on Mill Rock and Mannheim. Somewhat unfamiliar.
Yes?
My name is Ellen Rocko. I have serious concerns about the proportion of student housing to either unoccupied or single-family housing. I think you're, I understand the economics of the town, the village and so on and stuff like that. But I think we're heavily weighted by a lot in favor of student housing and not so much so for family housing, whether it's unoccupied or not. I understand that Mr. Loza has a terrific reputation as a landlord. That's a comfort to me, that he is intending at this point to build something that would be appropriate for a family and not for, whether it be residential cells or whatever. And not for students is a comfort to me. So I guess what I'm really asking is a question, which is, am I right in assuming that if this variance goes through, so there are two different lots, that anything that Mr. Loza proposes for them to build on the lot would still have to go through the planning board?
Correct.
So that as the planning board codes are further defined and whatever, some of the concerns that people have would be protected against. So I'm neither saying yay, I love this or no, I hate this. I'm just confirming for myself that there will be continued village responsibility for what happens on this piece of property.
Mr. Stephens has explained that.
As a matter of fact, the Village Board, the planning board urging, has just, will be making it possible, it's not completed yet, that all new construction non-baked-in lots will come through the planning board. Single-family, two-family, all new construction.
And this would not--
The new size on this lot is going to make this lot so it'll never be more than a single-family house. Or the Village Board will just three-bedroom house unless the zoning changes. The biggest house in the village is a three-bedroom house.
Okay, and this, there's no, this property would fall under the new rules, not the old?
By the time he gets his file, we hope to allow this to play disturb--
Actually, the law's already been passed and filed with the Secretary of State, so that's just a simple action of--
Not filed yet.
Not filed.
Not filed, no.
It's filed not.
But by the time he gets his map drawn and filed, we should be standing.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing any hands, I would--
Can I say something else? For the record, this really doesn't have a whole lot to do with this, but I would like to perhaps educate several people in respect to the student population and student housing. I also do not like getting waken up at nighttime. I have paid over $2 million in school taxes in my tenure in this town. If you were to take all of the single, all of the families' homes where the students live now and apply families to that, it sounds like a marvelous idea. Families have children. Children need schools. Schools need teachers. Schools need buses. You think that the tax base is high now. It would be much higher. So please, have some appreciation for the students in this town. With the volume of money that they spend here, they support us very well.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, please? Way over here. Yeah, the students are, if they're moving into residential areas, they don't have the same kind of timeframe of living that we do. They're up late at night and, yes, a couple of weeks ago, last Saturday, in fact, I have to speak to the person next week. We talked the same thing to her because it was a mistake. But we were up till 2:00 o'clock in the morning. They like to stay up late and they like to talk and laugh. And after a couple of years, the decibel levels go way up. They don't need to, but they do. They're all nice and sweet. And let's not ever forget that SUNY New Pauls is not paying taxes. We are paying their taxes. And I don't agree with you saying that you're getting all taxes from the student houses and the rental houses. Not with what I pay for my tiny little home. So I don't agree with that.
I will have to ask that we stay with the issue that was before us, which is whether or not we will grant the variance for the subdivision of this lot. Unless you are addressing the issue of the subdivision, I cannot recognize. I will now entertain a motion to close the publicure. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. What is the pleasure of the floor? I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Well, I have a concern, I have to ask Mr. Loza--
Of course.
One of the things we are to look at is whether the requested variance is substantial. There's some for 25% variance on lots.
18%.
Substantial variance. What other options did you consider?
There are only two options. One, to build a real big building, make it a two-family. Or to ask for the variance.
I would, I personally would not like to see happen there what's happened next door to me.
I would like to point out that there are several criteria for the granting of variances. One of them is the item that Mrs. Silberger has raised, and that is whether this is substantial. However, a board is empowered to look at the four criteria and to give them whatever weight the board wishes to give them, but does not have to feel that every one of the criteria will be satisfied. So the issue is whether or not the board should make a decision based upon the degree of leeway that would be given regarding density or whether the board is prepared to grant Mr. Loza the variance with the clear notion that in granting it, it does preserve the one-family neighborhood by protecting the residents because the lot that will be subdivided will not support anything other than a one-family house.
The other thing I've noticed about this is there is, what I'm seeing on this drawing, no place for parking. Where do you see parking happening? I mean, is that what is going to be-- I mean, is that what is going to be impacted by having a smaller lot size? Where would the parking appear for this house?
As every other house on that street, as many of the other houses on that street do, in their driveway.
You said that the driveway would be moved over to John Street.
The driveway would be moved over, yes.
So there's plenty of room there.
Moved over to John Street.
To John Street.
I'm on some level making a determination on this because it doesn't represent.
Well, just make it with the condition that that would be, that the Mylar copies that would require the chairman's signature to go to the county would be presented with that appropriate change.
Would it help every county with the variance criteria?
These are the four criteria. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created with consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the variance. Still waiting for a motion.
I move that we grant the variance.
There is second to that. I will second. Is there further discussion?
I think that the motion would have to be a bit more specific. One, stimulating with the entrance.
Would you accept that?
On John Street.
All right, the condition would be that the entrance would be on John Street.
And it would be covering. So with the parking, I'm not sure if that, when you're cutting like that much of the lot. I don't like seeing that kind of. I think it's substantial. I think it's self-created. And I think this is not a hard case. I mean, I understand the argument that you don't want to have that near to a roommate house.
Because once it's there, it's there.
On the other hand.
I would have much rather seen the lot next to me with a small house on it, and not this huge thing that is going to be a student house forever. And it's also hooked right on to a very nice, roughly 1900 house. And I really, I just, I mean, if you've never been down there, you don't know what I'm talking about. But I really don't, I mean, I'm really, I kicked myself a million times that I didn't buy that place.
We got that. What I'm looking at is this granting of variance for one that is that great. I don't like the idea of cutting the property that small. I mean, I almost would rather see the difference split between the two lots. You have two non-conforming lots, but you're sure that there's going to be a place for people to park, there's going to be a yard where children can play. And that would be enough ducking technologies at the front door. Yeah, I mean, I'm just not comfortable with the subdivision that grants that large of a percentage of difference.
On the other hand, if there is no other plan before us, then the alternative is to deny the variance and risk the possibility that a large two-family house would be built on the existing lot.
Why did you angle the line in? Why, you just wanted to make that one lot conforming?
That was the advice of the planning board to make. Something can't be, things need to be made conforming more than non-conforming. You know, if you would rather slice the line at a different angle and have two non-conforming lots, then you essentially would need two variances, one for each parcel.
Lot one does require a variance, as I mentioned earlier. It's the combination of both side yards. It's 4.1 feet, 26 is required. So that's for lot one. Lot two would be the new corner lot. Right now, you have one lot that comprises a corner lot. These are typically built larger than some of the lots that, between the corners and the intersections. So the board still has to consider a 4.1-foot variance for the combined side yards of the existing lot in addition to the, by my calculations, the proposed lot is 75.5% of the minimum conforming lot area.
That's what my calculation is.
Yeah, and I think that should be clear before the board votes.
Yeah, it's 25%.
Do you think there's any chance that you might be able to purchase that little corner that obviously was part of the lot, which would make the variance less?
At the present time, at the present time, I asked, I asked him. At present time, he does not want to sell that.
But in the future, it could possibly be.
You can't, you can't do that. No, what we've had before us is a substantial variance. I mean, it hits on two of the items here. Clearly, it's a substantial variance. And you knew what the situation was when you bought the lot. So it's not something that.
I understand that. And when I approached the planning board, it was the advice of the planning board to split the lots to have two smaller sized houses. On that advice, perhaps I jumped the gun a little bit, but I put a brand-new roof on that house.
Okay. In terms of the undesirable change in the neighborhood, I'm hearing concerns, but I'm also hearing people say, you know, that if you had created a roommate house, that that would equally be an undesirable change. So it kind of cancels that one out. Obviously, you've got just not quite enough property to make two here, but you're asking for two variances. And I just, I wish it weren't 25%. I mean, that makes a very small dwelling.
If I had enough property, then I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't need the variance.
Are you ready to vote?
I am.
Is there any further discussion? The motion is to grant the variance with the condition that the driveway to the newly created lot will be on John Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, white sign? Well, we have a square vote, which means that the variance is denied.
Okay.
I would like order, please. The second matter before us is an appeal. The applicant is requesting relief from Chapter 212-58C, which states, "The Board of Appeal shall hear and decide an appeal where it is alleged that error or misinterpretation in any order, requirement, decision, grant, or refusal was made by the Building Inspector or other administrative official in carrying out or enforcement of the provision of this chapter or any rule or regulation pursuant thereof." It is the second part to the application, or the second application. "The applicant is requesting relief from Chapter 212-58D, which states, 'Interpretation. The Board of Appeal shall upon appeal from any decision, order, or requirement by the administrative official or body, or upon the request of any official or board of the village, decide any question involving the interpretation of any provision of this chapter, including determination of the exact location of a zoning district boundary if there is uncertainty with respect thereto.'" Who is representing?
Mrs.?
Hi. My name is Richard Golden. I'm associated with Jake Daly as attorneys for the appeals.
Thank you.
G O L D E A. I don't think it's necessary for me to go over in detail everything that's been submitted to you.
All right.
But I do want to cover some very important issues. First is that we are appealing to you from the June 18, 2012, letter from Catherine Ramons, the Building Inspector. But before we get to the issue of whether or not the special permit has expired, I think there is at least one, if not two, threshold questions that must be addressed by this board. In order to enforce, and this is an enforcement action in essence, not an enforcement action in the Justice Court, but it's an enforcement action with respect to whether or not the special permit has expired. And that determination, your code and under state law, can only be made by the Building Inspector. It seems to me that the first threshold question that must be answered is whether or not the Building Inspector actually made a determination. When you look at this very brief letter, it says that the premises has been, the special use permit under which the premises has been operating, has been deemed expired. That's very curious language. Very passive. It doesn't sound to me as if that is a determination of the Building Inspector. It says that it has been deemed expired. Almost sounds like it's a third party. And given the history that's in the record here that's been submitted to the Board of, the Board of Trustees being involved in this process of making some determinations as to whether they believe the special permit has expired or not. And that same language was used, actually, in a letter from the Board of Trustees. Has been deemed expired. And therefore, if in fact the Building Inspector herself has not made this determination, but is simply passing on the determination of the Board of Trustees, then this appeal is ended because there's no determination enforceable with respect to the special permit use. That can only be made by the Building Inspector. So I think it's incumbent upon this board to make inquiry of the Building Inspector as to whether or not she actually made a determination on June 18's letter, or whether, as it appears to me, that she is simply being the messenger and passing on the determination of the Board of Trustees. And as this board, I believe in an earlier application, is correctly giving the opinion that the Board of Trustees does not have the power to go ahead and make such determinations. That power is with the Building Inspector. And that's who I can appeal to. I can't appeal the decision of the Board of Trustees. So that's the initial threshold question that I believe has to be answered by this board upon inquiry of the Building Inspector. If in fact it's determined that the Building Inspector did make a determination, I do not believe that this letter satisfies as to whether or not there is enough information to make that determination. It simply says, "On the basis of evidence submitted to this department and the Village Board, in order for a decision not to be arbitrary and capricious, there must be some factual basis set forth, and the reasoning associated with that factual basis in order for a final determination to be made." There is none here. And I believe, again, it's incumbent upon this board, if in fact a determination was made by the Building Inspector, that there has to be set forth this specific factual basis and the rationale for why the special permit has expired. That's not present in the letter that we have appealed from. And there's no other letter that I know of from the Building Inspector that has set forth the basis for any kind of determination. Now, we have set forth also a basis in the record. I'm not sure we're going to get to that. But there is adequate basis in the record to make the determination that this special permit has not expired, that there has been sufficient activity on various times, set forth in very specific ways and backed up by various documents, that there wasn't a period of time of six months in which all activity whatsoever ceased. And the specific term at issue is that the activity has ceased, completely stopped. That term, and this is related to the interpretation issue that's also before you, that the term ceased is used in several other places in the code. And obviously, you're going to be relying upon the advice of your counsel, but I believe that this New York state law requires that you, when you're interpreting portions of a statute for a word that's not defined, such as ceased, that you need to be using it the same way that it's used in other contexts throughout the code. I think when you look at those other contexts, and indeed, when you look at this particular letter as well by the Building Inspector, talking about the use must cease immediately. That's not, well, you can carry on some other activities, but it means everything has to stop. I believe, and it was set forth in law here, that you really, it's tantamount to an abandonment of the use by the owner, which I do not believe is present in this case. And again, the factual basis for that is set forth in the record. But bringing it back to the initial threshold question, I think we first need to make a determination. This board needs to inquire as to whether or not the Building Inspector did in fact make a determination herself and not simply pass on information or determination by others.
Do you have anything further to say to us?
No, everything else is in the record, if you want.
And we have, we do have that.
You do have that?
Yes.
If you want me to elaborate or answer any questions, we have to do so even now or later.
Unless a member of the board wishes. Entertaining a motion to open the public hearing.
Some move?
All in favor?
Aye.
This is your opportunity to speak to this issue. Please understand that we are operating in such a manner that if you wish to speak, you need to be recognized by the chair. You need to state your name and spell your last name. And one person speaks at a time. Thank you.
Pardon me, Chairman. I believe this afternoon, an email was received in the clerk's office.
Thank you.
We have a letter here from Christina Eiler, 27 Orchard Heights, New Paul. She cannot be present, but she wishes the Board to have this information of point of view. My name is Christina Eiler, and I am writing this letter on behalf of myself and Barbara Youngman of Orchard Heights, Condominiums. We are unable to attend tonight's meeting in person as I am at work and Barbara is out of town. I am writing clarified that we support and agree with our neighbors' statements tonight who are present. As stated previously by the Orchard Heights community, the activities of 127 Main Street has negatively impacted our quality of life as well as that of the bordering neighborhoods, the community at large, and has drained public resources since its inception due to its extensively evidenced, chronic, and excessive nuisance factors. The point of this letter is simple and can be expressed through two points of code. Per 212-38A, special permit uses defined. Those uses designated as special permit uses in the regulations, Article III, are hereby declared to possess characteristics of such unique and special form as to require that each specific use shall be considered as an individual case and as to further require conformance to additional standards as well as specified in this article. Per 212-395, expiration B, a special use permit shall be deemed to authorize only one particular special use permit and shall expire if the authorization's special use shall cease for more than six months for any reason. Please note, PB 0605 has one underscored, one special use, which is that of the establishment of a restaurant slash bar. If a restaurant was operated at 127 Main in which, however, format has been presented by the owners as factual without the bar, the business was, then was not unique and a special form that which PB 0605 was originally intended. Instead of the operation of a restaurant slash bar, then what we see presented is a variety of new, other unauthorized uses at 127 Main Street. That is, private party, cash buffet, none of which are included as an appropriate use or fall under the definition of restaurant slash bar. In other words, an apparent free-for-all of business activity.
Fall outside the scope. It's outside the scope.
Is outside the scope of approved use defined in PB 0605. Additionally, for the sake of clarity, 127 Main has never been a non-conforming use or operated as an auxiliary bar. In summary, if a special use which was granted in S U P PB 0605, thus deemed as a unique and special form, has been nonexistent for six months due to an inactive liquor license, which is needed to be a restaurant slash bar, this translates into proof that the actual approved use was not the business which was taking place. There are no unreasonable grounds in the interpretation of events of the Building Inspector or Village Official decisions in this situation, as S U P is considered on a case-by-case basis. As this case by design is complex, the Village responses have, in response, been complex. From what has been presented, the evidence simply appears to be a longstanding inability of the owner to follow the basic premise of a restaurant slash bar. And now we are seeing new unapproved uses at 127 Main, which lead us further and further away from the original intended authorized use and six original conditions in PB 0605. We are not seeing a cessation of use, rather, we are seeing a transformation of the use of the establishment into uses that are unapproved and outside the scope of what was authorized in PB 0605, that is, a restaurant bar. Customary practices do not apply in this case, as we originally had an intended use that was defined as having unique characteristics. If the information showing activity of a business nature at 127 Main is accepted as true without the bar part of restaurant slash bar, then we must also say the business use was not unapproved and not in accordance with the limitations and definitions outlined in PB 0605. Therefore, as the special use restaurant slash bar has not been existence for over six months per Code 212-395B noted above, very simply, the S U P has expired and should remain expired. Once again, thank you for your time and attention to our presentation. We enter that into the record. Does anyone wish to speak to this point? Please identify yourself.
Allison Nash at Lithe and Postive Street. N-A-S-H.
Would you stand, please?
I'll stand for a little while, but this is, I have a thorough response to the document that Ms. Daly prepared, so I would like to go through it.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
evening's proceedings? And he is welcome to foil the documents tomorrow if you'd like.
Yes, it's fine.
Mr. Gold.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I was going to suggest that. Allison, where are you?
Grandpa. Some of my neighbors and I will be referring to a packet of documents that we have prepared for this hearing, Exhibit A, which I've given you, and to packets and statements that we have presented to various boards in the past, Exhibit B, and that's part of what I just handed out. We are submitting all of these as part of the official record for this public hearing. In addition, we are submitting a copy of Ms. Daly's 16-page brief with our implications to be considered as part of our response to the appeal. And I hand it out. We are addressing an appeal that has been crafted by lawyers and includes several pages of citations of case law. We are Village residents who want to preserve the character of the Village and our neighborhood, but who do not have expertise in case law. What we have is our commitment to upholding the Village Code, in which we do have some expertise. I will therefore address Ms. Daly's arguments in terms of provisions in Chapter 212 of the New Paul's Village Code. According to 212-39B5B, a special use permit expires if the authorized special use shall cease for more than six months for any reason. On June 12th, 2012, we provided documentation for this Board that the restaurant bar used for 127 Main Street had clearly ceased for over six months, the owner's disingenuous attempts to make it appear otherwise notwithstanding. We have testimonies by Mr. Palangelo and Mr. McKay, and those are the documents that I have gave you, discredited Mr. Tufano's claims of continued use. Ms. Tufano's lawyer is now using new tactics. However, her arguments are not supported by the letter or by the spirit of the Village Code. As most of her extensive appeal focuses on the interpretation of the term ceased in use, I'll start with that. Ms. Daly uses a broad interpretation of the word use. She asserts that activities supporting the special use, such as decorating, applying for permits, health, fire, and safety inspections, et cetera, are essentially included in the term use. And two, a cessation in use means that the use has been abandoned. Village Code does not support these interpretations. Let's start with Ms. Daly's broad interpretation of use. She is correct in stating that Village Code does not explicitly define the term use, but the language used in 212B-39B5B is not broad. It specifically refers to the authorized special use specified in an S U P. And the code is quite clear in its definition of special uses. A restaurant and bar authorized by the S U P for 127 Main Street. So the definition for a bar, 212B, a retail business licensed by the State, by the New York State Liquor Authority for the sale of on-premises consumption of alcoholic beverages, has 127 Main Street authorized use as a bar ceased for over six months. The liquor license for 127 Main Street has been inactive since June 27th, 2011, we have that documented. Thus, alcoholic beverages could not have legally been sold at 127 since that date and possibly before that date. Therefore, as of June 27th, 2011, the establishment did not meet the definition of a bar. Its permitted special use as a bar had been suspended, ceased, for well over six months. I could stop at this point. It is the bar use that has been the source of all the problems in the Village and in our neighborhood. As we have repeatedly reminded this Board, the Village Board, and the Planning Board, a bar use at this location is prohibited, as this is too close to a residential district, a church, and a school. It's again according to Village Code. If a restaurant opened at 127 Main that conforms to normal restaurant hours, like the surrounding restaurants, Tokyo Sushi and Lemongrass, we neighbors would have no objection. But since an S U P was mistakenly issued for two conjoined uses, a restaurant and bar, I will address the issue of ceased in use for the restaurant as well. The code defines a restaurant as, "A structure where food and/or drink are prepared and sold solely for consumption within the structure." It goes on. As we have clearly demonstrated to the ZBA at the June 12th, 2012 meeting, 127 Main Street did not sell food and/or drink from May 28th, 2011, and possibly before that date, through January 8th, 2012, and perhaps not then either, a period of well over six months. And that's documented. Moreover, if we take Ms. Tufano at her word and assume that food was sold from January 18th through March 2nd, 2012, according to her own signed affidavit, the food was not in fact prepared at 127 Main Street, but prepared elsewhere. And that's in your documents. In Ms. Tufano's own words, "During the time period of the alleged first and second laps, I was the only employee for Rasples Bar and Grill, and the food prepared for consumption by our customers was prepared by me or under my supervision at one of my other establishments." Thus, the food was not prepared on the premises of 127 Main Street. Therefore, even if a cash buffet was operating, as Ms. Tufano claimed, the establishment did not meet the definition of a restaurant. The authorized special use as a restaurant had thus ceased since the previous spring, spring 2011. Okay, now let's talk about suspended versus abandoned. Ms. Daly contends that ceased in use means a use has been abandoned. However, there are many reasons for a use to cease. A use may be abandoned or may be suspended for a variety of reasons, like redecorating, applying for permits and inspections, et cetera. The code clearly states that any reason will do for the S U P to expire. Furthermore, the code does not state that the S U P expires only when a use is abandoned, or in other words, when all uses cease. The code, in fact, is quite specific in stating that the S U P expires when the authorized special use has ceased. Thus, decorating, applying for permits, et cetera, does not comprise the authorized special use as a bar or restaurant. Decorating is not preparing food, selling food, serving alcohol, or under the auspices of the State Liquor Authority. These are the authorized special uses, and all of these have ceased for a period of over six months. Interpreting decorating and applying for permits as continued use is a loophole that, if accepted by this Board, can be exercised indefinitely in this and other cases. Is this a precedent that the Board wishes to set? Okay, now I'll talk about the distinction between special use, nonconforming use, and prohibited use. Ms. Daly clearly did her homework in presenting what appear to be relevant case law examples to support her broad definition of the term use. However, her pages of examples do not actually address the issue of expiration of special use permits. Instead, these examples focus on nonconforming uses. A nonconforming use is not the same as a special use. According to Village Code, a nonconforming use is a building, structure, or premises legally existing and are used at the time of adoption of this chapter or any amendment heretofore, and which does not conform with the use regulations of the zoning district in which it is located. This is Chapter 212-5B. Chapter 212 was adopted in 1977. Rasples was given its S U P in 2006, long after the code was adopted. The bar use for 127 Main Street, while specifically prohibited by code at this location, is not considered to be a nonconforming use. In contrast, a special use is defined as, "A use which because of its unique characteristics requires individual consideration in each case." Thus, Ms. Daly's case law examples are not only irrelevant because they focus on nonconforming uses, but also because each special use requires individual consideration. Special uses are in fact defined as special or unique. Code regulations are in place to ensure that S U Ps are granted to establishments that are not, more objectionable than nearby properties by reasoning of noise, fumes, vibration, or other characteristics than will be the operation of any permitted use not requiring an S U P. The code therefore requires that special uses are given more scrutiny than nonconforming uses. Nonconforming uses do not alter the character of the neighborhood as that use commenced before, often long before, code amendments prohibiting that use were in place. Such uses have historically been permitted and are grandfathered. Thus, they are given greater latitude, not only in our Village Code, but in the case law examples cited by Ms. Daly as well. 127 Main Street's use as a bar has not been grandfathered. The special use permit for a bar was granted in error stemming from a misrepresentation of the intended use by the applicant for the S U P. Operations in connection with this special use have indeed been more objectionable to nearby properties. The extensive and thorough documentation that Ms. Daly prepared is impressive. We can therefore surmise that her case law examples focusing on nonconforming uses rather than special uses indicate that she found no case law examples for special uses that would be helpful to her client. Thus, the case law examples that she provided that define continued use even when establishments operate without permits or are not actually open for business, all apply to nonconforming uses. She provides no case law supporting her contention that decorating and applying for permits has legally been interpreted by the courts as continued use or special use permits. Her well-prepared document thus bears no relevance to this case. The distinction between ceased, terminate, and abandoned. Ms. Daly contends that these terms are interchangeable, that there are no perceptible differences between between the meaning of these terms. Specifically, she cites code sections related to the termination of variances and nonconforming uses, and acquaints these with the six-month cease in use that leads to the expiration of SUPs. However, the Village Code makes clear distinction among these terms. Variances may be granted for uses or structures that do not conform to code regulations. If a variance is granted but not exercised, that is commenced within a period of a year, it is then terminated. For example, let's assume that a variance for a bar had been granted to 127 Main Street. It did not. If that bar then did not open within a year, the variance would be terminated. The expiration of an SUP is quite different from the termination of a variance. The expiration of an SUP refers to a business that has already been open but later closes for a period of six months. For example, recently, the ownership of the restaurant at 36 Main Street has changed. If the new owners had not opened again for six months, the SUP would then expire. And note that they have reopened within two months. A variance is given for a new situation which takes more time getting started from the ground up than continuing a use when owners change hands. Thus, having a one-year time period for the termination of a variance and a six-month cease in use for the expiration of an SUP is reasonable and clear. And then I just want to talk very briefly about the procedural violation, the alleged procedural violation. Ms. Daly asserts that Ms. Stefano was not afforded her due process rights concerning the expiration of the SUP for 127 Main Street. But according to Village Code, an SUP expires if the authorized special use ceases for six months. Notice of any kind of hear- notice or any kind of hearing is not required by the code. Owners are expected to know the Village Code on this matter. Although not required, Village offered Ms. Stefano the opportunity to present evidence that there had been no six-month cease in use. In response, Ms. Stefano supplied kitchen checks that actually indicated a cease in use for over six months. And we have that documented. The Village then gave Ms. Stefano yet another chance to submit additional evidence, despite the fact that the deadline set by the board for submitting for evidence had passed. The only additional evidence that Ms. Stefano submitted was a notarized statement indicating that a private party took place at 127 Main Street on July 30. This is in fact the only evidence for use within a six-month. So the July 30th date was the only evidence. Evidence that neighboring residents submitted to the June 12, 2012 ZBA appeal made clear that there was no VCO for any establishment at 127 for July 30th, so that a restaurant could not have been legally operating. And that Ms. Stefano's documentation of use on July 30th was at best a misrepresentation. In light of the new evidence, the ZBA referred the issue of SUP expiration back to the Village As the July 30th use had been discredited, there was no credible evidence to support Ms. Stefano's claim that 127 Main Street's authorized special use as a restaurant and bar had not ceased for over six months. The Village Board therefore asked the building inspector to notify Ms. Stefano that the SUP for 127 Main Street had expired. At this point, Ms. Stefano exercised her due process rights by applying to the ZBA to reverse the building inspector's determination. As required by code, the ZBA is holding a public hearing. ZBA members, Village lawyers, and Village officials are spending a great deal of time and attention to the extensive documentation that Ms. Stefano and her lawyer submitted for this appeal. Ms. Stefano is receiving the due process rights afforded to her by the Village Code. Just very quick summing up. In summary, the building inspector's actions were not orbiting her precious, as there was ample evidence that there was well over a six-month cease in the authorized special use for a restaurant and bar at 127 Main Street. Additionally, the owner's due process rights were not violated. In fact, they were literally extended to the benefit of the owner. Since its inception, many courtesies and accommodations have been granted to this business, a business that has repeatedly violated Village Code, SUP conditions, and state law. It is time that we, the residents of New Paltz, are given the same courtesy protection and acknowledgement of our rights and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Would you give Katie that?
Yes.
And she will make a copy and give you back your copy.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Nash. Dr. Nash, your speaker.
Would you see that Ms. Stefano's attorney gets a copy of that?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Christine Marmo, M-A-R-M-O, 8 Prospect Street. In reading through all of these documents and trying to make my points, I got very frustrated. This debate has gone on for over six years. When I get this way frustrated, I look to a frame of reference. The Village Code has always been a source of clarity, but this time I also turned to the dictionary. I looked up the word intent. A word to my mind should be at the center of this argument, yet has never been mentioned by anyone connected with 127 Main Street. Intent. A small but bold word, intent. According to the dictionary, means "having the will or attention concentrated to achieve some end purpose." That about sums up everybody here tonight. No matter what side of this argument one falls, we have the intent to achieve some end purpose. The overarching purpose or intent of the ZBA as stewards of our code is to promote orderly development, preserve and enhance aesthetic values, preserve the character of the community, and prohibit incompatible uses. That last part is really important. Preserve the character of the community and prohibit incompatible uses. Of course, the story is in the telling. Ms. Daly's story did not acknowledge the heart of this argument, which is, according to the code, a bar is not only an incompatible use at 127 Main, it is prohibited. 212 41d 12 in the code. Ms. Daly contends that the establishments at 127 Main have been primarily restaurants. This is not the case. The SLA does not focus on making arrests at restaurants. One SLA enforcement emphasis is on bars serving alcohol to underage customers. Even though technically, it was the Lessee under Mahoney's West whose liquor license was pulled in March of 2011, make no mistake, the Ms. Stefano held the license. Technically, it was the Lessee under Mahoney's West whose liquor license was pulled in March of 2011. Make no mistake, the Ms. Stefano held the license through most of February of 2011. Had the SLA caught on sooner that underage minors were being served, it would have been Ms. Stefano's license that was pulled. In fact, for that very reason, Ms. Stefano is in trouble currently with the SLA for allowing minors to be served at Ramaldi's. Suffice it to say that any establishment at 127 Main has been primarily a bar with accessory food, not a restaurant with accessory liquor. Ms. Stefano, with lots of legal help, intends to make it possible to have a bar at 127 Main. No matter how many specious legal arguments Ms. Daly can dogpile on this case to make her point, the fact remains that Shea O'Brien's will be a bar. That is their intention, their concentrated effort to achieve that end purpose. That end purpose is only achievable if the SUP is deemed active by this board. We all have our differences, clearly, but we are all thinking people. Past behavior is the best predictor of future actions. No matter what iteration 127 took on, whether it be Rasples or Mahoney's, every condition of this coveted SUP 0605 was blatantly violated. Why? Because one must have amplified music to make money at a bar. The neighbors can all attest that on the night of January 27, 2011, featured a live band, bounce method. The neighbors can all attest that music was amplified as we heard it while we were in bed. Why adhere to a 2:00 a.m. closing as specified by the SUP if the closing can be stretched to 3:00 or 3:30? Bars make heaps of money between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. So it was no surprise that the owners of 127 Main lobbied to have the SUP modified to extend business hours to 4:00 a.m. Do you know any family restaurant that serves until 4:00 a.m.? Where is a family restaurant for that matter that serves until 2:00 a.m.? Intent. Having the will or attention concentrated to achieve some end purpose. The end purpose for the owners of 127 Main is to have a bar because a bar makes money. We all get it. Serving liquor is very profitable, serving food less so. In fact, in the planning board's January 5, 2010 workshop minutes, during which Ms. Stefano and her then other lawyer were trying to change the SUP to allow the establishment to be open until 4 instead of 2, Mr. Calvin Kowen, the owner's lawyer at the time, stated, I quote, "The bar is generally the more profitable end of any restaurant, and especially in these economic times, anything that can increase the business profit margin is something they are going to look into and try to stay in business, and we want to keep that business." End quote. That was in 2010, clearly a different year, different lawyer, but has the intent changed? Will Shea O'Brien primarily be a family restaurant with no evolution into a late-night bar scene? Almost certainly, the answer is no. Just peer into the windows of 127 Main today. You will see that the size of the bar has been greatly expanded, and there's a large dance floor. Do they intend to abide by the no-amplified-music condition of the current SUP? I guess I can't envision contragating with an acoustic band. I envision live music or DJs to accommodate a large, late-night drinking crowd. Envision, perhaps I should use the more appropriate word, reliving, as that's what occurred when the two prior establishments were briefly in business. Again, the story's in the telling. The frantic efforts of Ms. Stefano to have Mr. McKay misrepresent himself for her are depicted differently by Mr. McKay, as you can see in his letter, versus Ms. Daly's sanitized version. Ms. Daly's version would almost make one believe that Ms. Stefano was honest and forthright. That is not the case. Again, the word intent. Having the will or attention concentrated to achieve some end purpose, even if lives are involved. If, as the owners and their lawyers are arguing, that administrative duties count in this question's six-month period, I pause at the following. Why not use that argument first? Instead, the owner went to great lengths to lie, going to Mr. McKay's place of employment with her own notary, and the letters are in a packet. Second, the hopeful owner, the hopeful tenant of 127 Main, Mr. Colangelo of Gump's Smokehouse, has stated that he had plenty of time to open the business within six months. The business was described as turnkey. He renovated, redecorated for a late summer 2011 opening, face the coasties are in a packet. The village permits were obtained speedily from the building inspector. Further, the Board of Health Inspection could have been obtained within five days. That's also in a packet. What did Gump's open in September of 2011, which would have been well within the six-month period? The holdup was not because it was not enough time to tend to administrative details, but because Ms. Stefano's business deal with Mr. Colangelo fell through. This is a self-created hardship on part of Ms. Stefano, and there are email communications that go straight to this point. It is customary practice in New Paltz to stay within the six-month time period for SUPs. If six months were not enough time for a business with an SUP to reopen, this would have arisen before in front of this board. And it has not. Further, think of the precedent this would set. The six-month expiration would be meaningless if obtaining permits were part of the six-month period. The clock would be continually reset. Fourth, Mr. Ariel stated at the April 25 Village Board Meeting that, quote, "Administrative action alone is insufficient for property owners to show they have been open for the correct amount of time." And fifth, again, this SUP is expired, not revoked. The owners could simply apply for a new SUP. Instead, they are digging into their deep pockets and paying lawyers to retain the old SUP, whose conditions they didn't honor anyway. Why? The answer is obvious. Their intent is to open a bar, and a bar makes money. The owners of 127 Main likely have a business model in mind much like P&amp;G's. Food during the day, and then about 10 o'clock, the food is medable, and the alcohol sales fuel the cash box. This is the case with McGillicuddy's, Murphy's, and the ill-fated Ramaldi's. We have no problem with these establishments. Frequent some of them, in fact. We have no problem with bars. But we do have a problem with a bar at 127 Main because a bar is prohibited by the code in that location. Back to that powerful little word, intent. Having the will or attention concentrated to achieve some end purpose. Let's look at the intent of the 2006 Planning Board Minutes with regard to 127 Main. I quote, "After a lengthy discussion regarding the classification of the establishment and the intention of the law, the board felt that the establishment was a restaurant as opposed to a bar." This was, of course, before the restaurant, before the establishment was open. Upon reading or hearing these words, no matter where any of us stands in this debate, no one in this room would disagree that the intent of the 2006 board was to approve a family restaurant with an ancillary bar, like Lemongrass. No member of that board would have approved a P&amp;G's-type business model because of the location so close to residents, churches, and schools. To ensure the establishment's primary use was to be a restaurant, the Planning Board drafted an SUP with specific conditions to that end. Unfortunately, the intent of the 2006 Planning Board to shield our neighborhood from the nuisance factors from a bar were trampled by 127's owners by exploiting mistakes in the SUP. They did this to achieve their purpose, to open a bar. To sum up the intents of all parties involved, the neighbors want to have the SUP expiration upheld with the intended purpose to have a business at 127 Main that is compatible and a permitted use at quality-of liked components. The 2006 Planning Board crafted the SUP conditions with the intention to protect the neighborhood from nonpermitted uses as a bar is not permitted in that location. The owners of 127 Main intend to open a bar at any expense to our neighborhood. Through all of this, why hasn't the intent of the new business been asked of the owners? Is that not relevant? Is it not reasonable to ask the business owners here and now if they plan to adhere to SUP conditions when they clearly have not before? Why are these questions not being asked? The elephant in the room. Intent of all concerned power parties should figure prominently into this board's decision. If the SUP is deemed active, a late-night bar and all of its associated nuisance factors will plague our neighborhood once again. Board members, if you vote in favor of reversing the building inspector's decision, it is equal to permitting a bar at 127 Main Street. This is counter to preserving the character of the community and prohibiting incompatible uses. Please vote with these intentions at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you give a copy of that to our clerk? Does anyone else? Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes.
My name is Andy Garcia. I'm G-A-R-C-A. I helped Mr. Colangelo paint and decorate the place. Helped move this up in there, and I also helped move it out. So I can tell you firsthand that it's, you know, things on the neighborhood.
Richard Colangelo. I can bring you through the whole entire painful year, but I don't think that's necessary. Providing with enough documentation, the place didn't open. The place wasn't open from March until I took possession or tenancy in July, and it did not open, as far as I know, because I was about to sign a lease, had not opened as of February 1st, when I was supposed to take re-tenancy. I guess the question is, this SUP, I'm not exactly sure, although I've got another bit more involved, had expired. I knew I was under the gun when I went in there in order to get the place open. This SUP has expired. I don't understand what the big deal is about reapplying for a new SUP, because that's what should happen. That's about it for me.
I can also attest to the looks that we, I was running these looks and all the chaos. Also helped move everything in, helped move everything out, and we never served anything at that place, and that's not it.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes.
Yes, my name is John Witter, and I'm a songwriter, so it proposes me to keep things under 2 minutes and 30 seconds. I live at 32 Orchard Heights condominiums, and so I'll just read my statement here. I have been a homeowner and taxpayer in the village of New Paltz for over 25 years. I believe the issuing of the original SUP to the owners of 127 Main Street was a mistake. I was not involved in those proceedings, but from the reading of the history of that decision, I am perplexed that it was ever granted. It is clear, however, that the owners of 127 Main Street misrepresented their intentions for requesting the SUP. Now, after they have lost that SUP as a consequence of their own actions, they are appealing the decision and requesting the SUP be reinstated. Once again, the only reason they need the SUP is so they can open a bar that will cater to students in a residential area of the village. If you have not looked through the front window of 127 Main, I can tell you that the current ancillary bar housed there appears to be the longest bar in New Paltz. I previously stated before the Village Board and zoning board that I was not anti-business, and that if a family-style restaurant opened at that location, I might patronize it. I did patronize the now-closed Ramaldi's when it was open. We all know why it was closed, the same reason the previous bar at 127 Main was closed, serving alcohol to minors. Now I will have nothing to do with any business associated with the owners of 127 Main. I cannot do business with someone whose business practices are clearly deceptive, dishonest, unscrupulous, disingenuous, and downright unneighborhood. I request that the zoning board deny their appeal for reinstatement of the SUP.
Would you give that to our clerk?
My name is June Wheeler. That's W-H-E-E-L-E-R. I have my five-year-old here, and one of my nine-year-olds are going to have to leave in five minutes to pick up the other nine-year-old. We moved to Prospect Street in 2010, and have absolutely been thrilled with our neighbors, with the other children on the block, and everything about it. We love walking around the corner, down the street, to go to the restaurants there. The same year that we moved there, I became a student at SUNY New Paltz, and now I have an MRT degree. I'm working to get a job as a teacher, and the only downside of the street is about between 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning during certain times of the year, there are kids walking down the street to their rented places, perhaps on John Street, perhaps farther. They use Prospect as the nearest street to go up, and with the entitlements that only too much alcohol can give one, they are extremely loud, obnoxious, completely oblivious that they're walking past family houses and obscenely, frighteningly so. I've been tempted during my nights when I was staying up all night studying, and I documented this in my mind, that this would happen the night I attempted to go to the door, reprimand them, that they were not behaving like the student that I was, I was home studying. But I was actually afraid to, because a couple of times when my husband tried to shush them from out our window, they screamed back obscenely, and it's very uncomfortable. I don't know if my children have ever been waking quiet, but it's not long before they will be, so take that into consideration too. I'm very glad to hear that these are not legal to have a bar at 127 Main because it's a wrong place for it.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Hollid, H-O-L-L-I-D. Live at 16 Prospect Street, and I just want to address that, you know, it is residential. There's a lot of children here, and this is less than half, that live within two houses of Main, and it is a constant stream when you have a bar so close, and it's a great impact that it has on my children.
Yes?
I'm William Laurie. I live on Prospect Street. I'm a father of three children. I would echo the statements that Junior made as well as Rich here. At night, as we all know, we go to a bar. If it's after midnight, it's a good chance they're evaporated. They're going into their cars, they're driving their cars on the streets of New Paltz, perhaps going on the freeway. This is possibly something that should be looked at and addressed, people leaving the local bars and getting into the cars and driving away. On several occasions, I've asked people to be quiet, I've been threatened a couple of times for asking someone to be quiet, not to awaken the kids in the neighborhood of which they're more than likely. This has continually been aggravation for not only myself, but for many people who are present here who aren't able to speak to this issue. This use of a, providing a special use permit to 127 Main Street is not keeping in character of what the neighborhood needs and wants, and basically think that it should not be too, should be allowed. And this has been going on for several years, and it comes to a point that just after saying no, this is not, this is not really encouraged for it to-
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Eric Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N. Live at 14 Prospect Street with my husband and two children who are here. And again, this is not even half the children within, between Main Street and John Street and Prospect Street there. We rent the house for prospective buyers, and as prospective buyers, the family, quiet atmosphere of the neighborhood is the attraction. We're as interested and prepared to invest in the neighborhood as we are in the house. So this Village Code is very meaningful to me and my family, and the intent behind it, while it's not singular, protecting the atmosphere and the character of the neighborhood is certainly meaningful to me, and to our whole community. So I ask you to deny the appeal and to revisit the original intention of the Village Code.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishes to speak, sorry. Yes?
She's hiding.
Sorry about that, Jean.
That's okay. My name is Jean Glutie, and I live in Village Gardens as well. I have been here for over 25 years, and I have a tip for your parents with young children. What I did while they were in elementary school, it's not very energy efficient, but because of the student traffic, shall I say, during the winter, I left air conditioners in the window all year, so that if they were being tested the next day, I could drown out the noise of the kids coming through. That's what I did, and I paid my bills. I just wanted to say, as you know, I have been involved with the Village Board many, many years, and I happen to be present and involved in 2005. And a lot of this goes back to the original intent. A lot of it was spoken here. I know that the original, the conditions of the original SUP were reviewed. Apparently, they're not written as strongly as it was intended by that board. But I was present, and I witnessed that Planning Board and their struggle, and what their intention was. They were aware of the location and the relative location of churches, preschools, and the residential areas, and it was their intent that this was to be a restaurant. And I'm not certain, because we're talking about, this is a long time ago, this is seven years, but it might have been in the use table where the predominant use as when you get a special use permit for a restaurant, it may be slash bar, so that you can get a liquor license and serve wine with your dinners. But it, back then in 2005, it was clearly the intention of the Planning Board to approve a restaurant, not a bar, and I just want to point out that it was under different ownership at that time.
I'm going to-
I thought the building department was going to do this on Sally Rhodes, R-H-O-A-D-S. The clerk of the board asked for permission for it to be used. I have a question, which I think really needs serious interpretation. Ms. Stefano owns the building at 127 Main Street. We keep talking about the special use permit. But I'd like the zoning board as a part of its examination of this to determine whether, in fact, she is the holder of the special use permit, because the special use permit was granted to one Mr. Dino Toscani, whose application was approved for a special use permit. It has been discussed widely in 2006. So Katie hands off this copy for each of you.
Fine.
But I think it's important, since things seem to have to be entered into the record for the purposes of examination, I will enter.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, and we will keep the hearing open, which means that we will reconvene at our regular time, the second Tuesday of the month, in the month of September, and we'll resume this meeting. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.